Where was everyone else when this community was being treated unfairly? I didn't see any of them. I didn't see Brad, I didn't see Zellomari, I didn't see Andrew Cuomo, I didn't see Blake, I didn't see any of them. These are new friends, you need to let them know I'm an old friend. I didn't just stop coming to this community.
This story was reported by Pakistan American Law Enforcement Society on the town hall meeting in Brooklyn, New York. In the town hall meeting, Mayor Eric Adams gave answers to all questions asked by the citizens and also awarded medals to the media. Pakistan Council and New York City's various institutions gave awards to the participants. Police Department, Fire Department, Department of Small Business Services, Department of Sanitation, Department of Citywide Administrative Services, Taxi and Llamas Commission, Department of Education, and the Mayor's office. The Pakistan American Law Enforcement Society members gave praise to the diverse institutions of Pakistan's citizens and members. At the start of the town hall meeting, they presented the prayer. Pakistan's prayer was presented. And then the American anthem. The program started.
Pakistan law enforcement society started back in 2005 with 175 NYPD officers. When society was created, our goal was to bring awareness to Pakistan community and bring more Pakistanian police personnel to NYPD. At this time, I would like to request not other, our president Detective Rohil to the stage.
The president Rohil Khalid said to Mayor Eric Adams.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Salaam alaikum waalaikum warahmatullah. Good evening ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to NYPD Pakistan American Law Enforcement Society Third Town Hall Meeting. Before we start this event, I want to acknowledge honorable New York City Mayor Eric Adams. Sir, please come at the stage as people want to see you. Before I move on, I just want to acknowledge a few more people and I would like to request them to come to the stage. The Muslim Auto Society President Deputy Inspector Mohit Dr. Please come at the stage. And he also was the first Pakistani captain, so he's a proud leader. Thank you for service sir. The next person, everybody knows, Mayor called him once, the real warrior, the Muslim liaison for Pakistani and Muslim community, Atiyas Al-Naz. Please come at the stage. Last but not the least, another leader who is a proud Pakistani community, Deputy Inspector Miss Bach Nour, please come at the stage. We start the town hall meeting, remember first Pakistani town hall meeting was March 2020. Before that, Pakistani community don't know too much about the town hall meeting, what they can ask, and what are their rights. So pals vote from the day one, working hard, and we achieved that much and we have over 775 members in uniform. And I think that was a great achievement. I would like to acknowledge my board members, Vice President Asad Anwar, Even Konya, Captain Attasham Khan, Sergeant Anant, Sergeant Faisal Ejas, Correspondent Secretary Mahran Fiaz, Secretary Pokar Ali, and Treasurer Mohammed Isher. And all the trustees, thank you for your hard work and that's the reason this hall is full, become a big great work. Thank you guys. Tonight is special for multiple reasons. We have honorable Mayor Eric Adams with us, but he's not the only one. He brought his entire team. I don't think on the Quran history, we ever seen that many executives and commissioners from each and every department for the Muslim Pakistani community. We have a DSNY superintendent Stephen Caruso with us. DSNY chief John Gabriel. DSNY inspector Sunny Presha Police. SBS Commissioner Sir Ross, Mr. Ross. And the first time, we also have TLC Deputy Commissioner for Uniform Services, Beryl with us. FDNY Deputy Assistant Chief Christopher. Thank you sir. And Department of Education Kevin, Mr. Kevin is with us, Department of Education. There were a lot of questions about the Board of Education and Department of Education. So I think, thank you sir, it's the first time whole community gonna see, you know, and they have a lot of questions for you. At help NYPD, we have 66 precinct commanding officer Captain Kadet Harad. Brooklyn South Inspector Pankusov. And for community up here, none other than Chief Lucy Taylor. Thank you everyone, before we move on, I want to bring something to everyone's attention. This town hall meeting is just not a town hall meeting. This is the awareness which the Pakistani community needed for the future. I don't know when the first Muslim came into the United States. I have no idea, I'm sure it's over 100 years. I heard the first Pakistani came in 1940s before the Pakistani reform, but later on, where he from, he moved, his family moved to Pakistan. He was an upstate. One thing I remember, it was everyone's dream, they want to hear Azan. We also have a DCAST Commissioner Lewis Molina with us. It was a dream to hear Azan. The first time the Muslim community heard the Azan was when our brother passed away, Police Officer Abid Fiaz, we heard about Azan on Coney Island. That was the first time, it was not official. It came to the honorable mayor's attention. He had a team who just worked for the Azan. And I remember Deputy Mayor of now, Kedadi, he made it approve the help of mayor. And now you can name the Azan on the mouth speaker in Ramadan and every Friday. And I think that's the biggest achievement in the history. I don't know how many mayors came before, I don't know how many mayors gonna come later on, but this will be remembered for rest of every Muslim's life. They will remember that and I think that's a big achievement and we respect that. Not only that, I remember when Mayor Adam was borough president. There was an incident happened in France. Somebody used disrespect word for our prophet Muhammad Suma Allah. I don't know what to do, I pick up the phone, I call this gentleman, Deputy Inspector Mohit Dr. And say we need to do a press conference. I don't know what we can do or not, he say go for it. The next person, Eric Adams. There was no other elected official, Muslim, non-Muslim, nobody was standing with us, but this person. And I remember his word, what he say, and I think that will shock everyone. He said it, it's recorded, you can find on YouTube. He said he will not step into that country till the leader of that country apologize to the Muslims. Nobody did to us that, for that reason, I respect this person and I standing with him every time, because nobody done that in the past. There was a handful of people and that mean a lot, and I remember, and I remember, I will tell that to my kids, my grandkids. So this is a big thing, you guys didn't know that before. He never like to try that, he don't do that. Because religious, you don't do that, you know, you don't, you don't want fame like that. But he's a lot of other stuff, that's the stuff I know. You guys didn't know that before, so we all witness and I'm sure it's recorded, that's why I'm saying for everyone. We need the people like him. We need to support the people who stand with the broken class people. Because we need to upgrade our class. If it's now or never. I can stand up for the election too and all those things, but what we need, we need people who care about us. Before, there was, 15 years ago, we don't have that many leaders in NYPD. Now, just the Pakistani community, we have 10 executives. We have 10 executives and we have two deputy inspectors and I think that's a big achievement. And we seen it in this era, the last three years. And if we got more time, we got more people like that, I think the sky is the limit. One thing at which I observed, as a community member, people complained, this person didn't do this, this person didn't do that. But in my experience, if you bring anything to the mayor's attention, that will be taken care. A perfect example is when Abid Fiaz situation happened. His line of duty was denied. We came to the mayor's office, we brought it to his attention and we all know the result. It took 10 months of because okay, another leader, we seen that our brother, he got a lot of duty stepped in to deserve it. He did in his power whatever he can. Now it's up to us, what we gonna do, how we gonna do, when we gonna do. You guys have questions, I'm sure, ask questions directly, he will answer. One thing about him, he don't shy, he will answer. If you don't have the answer, he got his team. So ask the team, we also have a Fire Department New York Deputy Commissioner Jim Hardy with us. I remember my vice president, he said one thing, he said, we did the Pakistani Heritage Month. It was never done before, we did in the historical building and one police plaza. And with the help of the mayor, if God will, Inshallah, pals and with all the community leaders, we will do the Pakistani Heritage Month in the Gracie Mansion. That was never done before, we will do it. Before we move on, any, if you guys have any questions, you will go after that once, Mr. Eric Adams. Same few words, sir, please come at the stage, honorable New York City Mayor Eric Adams.
My lady, please, you don't, you don't scare me, I, for you. You know, being mayor is a humbling experience. It's a very humbling experience. You're not black enough or you're too black. You're not Muslim enough or you're too Muslim. You're not Jewish enough or you're too Jewish. You don't help the poor enough, you don't help the rich enough. You begin to understand that your name is not mayor, it's not enough. It's a constant battle. And I'm not a new friend. I do not need a GPS to find Coney Island Avenue. I know this community so well. And I spent many, many years here. I was here in 2008. When the young men of this community were pulled out of their homes and many were placed on Third Avenue in the federal penitentiary. And I could not get anyone to stand with me. When I stood on Third Avenue, it's up the street and called for those young boys to be returned back to their communities. I was alone, I was threatened. I was a cop at the time and people told me, your career is in jeopardy. But I knew it was the right thing to do because I have a son. And I don't know what I would have done if in the middle of the night myself would have been pulled away. And many of you are prospering right now from this community. But this was not always the Coney Island Avenue. Go back and saw that businesses were decimated after 2001. And people fled and they no longer wanted to be here in this country because they believe being a Muslim in itself was a crime. And they decided to leave the community instead of being armed. And a group of police officers came to me when we were protecting the city and they came to me and said, Eric, we can't even protect our women at home and our daughters at home because at when the heat job, they're being attacked and brutalized as they walk the streets. And I took those officers to my attorney and we sat down together and he helped incorporate them for the Muslim society that still is in place today. But it didn't stop there. I became a state senator. And there was a senator named Greg Ball, you go look it up, Senator Ball. He would attempt to talk negatively about the Muslim community. And Greg stated he was going to desecrate the Quran on the floor of the state senate and then I said, if you do that, I'll knock you out on the steps floor of the state senate. But it didn't stop there. Someone put out the fire, kill a Muslim day, go back and ask your elders about it. And they stated that they wanted to kill a Muslim in the community in the city. And I walked the streets of Third Avenue in Bay Ridge with Muslim leaders and stated, this would not happen in the city that I'm the borough president of. And you must talk to Brother Najeeh and Debbie and I tell you of the day of a sister going into Staten Island and she was on the bus when the heat job. And someone threatened her while she was on the bus. We organized and went to that same bus and we took the bus across to Staten Island Bridge to send a loud message that our sisters in the city, no matter who they are and what religion they are, they will be treated with the respect and dignity that they deserve. So it goes on and on and on. And here you had a candidate that was asked, were they ever in a mosque? And they couldn't even tell you if they were. There has never been a mayor in the city of New York that has been in your mosque more than I have been. No one has been in your mosque. I am not a hidden friend. I'm not a friend that hides when I'm with a community of all communities. And not only that, do your own analysis. Yes, I've been to Africa seven times, yes, I've been to South and Central America, yes, I've been in Europe, yes. But tell me, what other mayor went to Saudi Arabia, went to Jordan, went to Oman? Tell me what mayor respect your community enough to go and see your community and where you came from. And we were on a trip to go to Lahore, Pakistan during the explosion, the civil support for the people. Commissioner Molina, I have people now who stop me on the street, call me murderer, call me Islamic folk, call me all of these names because they were not around when I was in the field with them. Many of your children don't know my history. And instead of embracing the person that's side by side with you, they depict me as someone that's against the Muslim community and they don't look at the records of those who call themselves elected officials and never stop with your community. I've always been here, the record will speak for itself. Go through an analysis and you will ask yourself, where was everyone else when this community was being treated unfairly? I didn't see any of them. I didn't see Brad, I didn't see Zellomari, I didn't see Andrew Cuomo, I didn't see Blake, I didn't see any of them. These are new friends, you need to let them know I'm an old friend. I didn't just stop coming to this community. And look at this moment, this is such a significant moment. Back during the 90s, during the 2000s, man, you didn't get this. I'm so proud of these brothers from this organization and what you're doing. You didn't see that, we were caught for eating in 2006, 2007 and you're lucky if you had 10 people. And now these brothers have started to recruit. There weren't Pakistani members of the New York City Police Department. There weren't brothers and sisters from the other Muslim community in the department. In fact, they were afraid to join the department because many of your mosques were being infiltrated and people were in there listening to you as you worship. But these brothers took their pain and they turn it into purpose and they empower your community and when you reach this level of prominence, you would never go back, you would never go back. It's time for this community with your power, your numbers and your strength, it's time for you to run a candidate for a city. It's time for you to run a candidate for a city. It's time for you to run a candidate for a council. It's time for you to be the district leader. You need to empower yourself, you don't need someone else to empower you. It's not unique, it's not unique. Every community has gone this way. It's not unique. Every community started out being on the outskirts and then empowering themselves from within. But you cannot accomplish your feat if you backfire and if you put yourself down because of some ideological differences that you have. Everyone disagree from time to time, but you all want the same thing for your community so you can unite together around your political strength and your political empowerment. Every mosque should register someone to vote. Every family should be registered to vote. Every community residents should be empowered to participate in the political process because the political process will determine how far your community goes. It's gonna determine what your strength is. And you need that strength. Because let's be honest, never always have a mayor like me. So the question is, how many mayors been here? How many mayors have walked down Coney Island Avenue? How many mayors can you call after a full day at 8:30 PM and say we want you here? So I want to turn it over, I want to turn it over to your question, but I want to tell you something. Hey folks, I'm not perfect. In fact, I'm perfectly imperfect. There's nothing special about me. I've been fortunate and lucky to have people to come together. They say we going to stand with you. This is the thing, the hardest 12 months of my life, 15 months of my life. I was facing 35 years in prison. Think about that. Just for doing my job. So it's not like they, it's not, I'm not who they want. They want you, I'm just in their way. And I got up every day and I did my job, I fought for you, working class people of the city. And I'm going to continue to do that. And God see fit for me to do it for another four years and let it be. If not, I know I did everything possible for the working class people of the city from every community in this city. I stood for you all and I stood in the way of those who wanted to harm you. So now I open up to any questions.
There's one more thing I just want to add. I don't know how many of you know the Gracie Mansion, I don't know how many people who visit there. In the past, we didn't have that many invitations. In the past, you may get an email, the mayor invites you, but someone probably gonna call you, no, don't call, we don't have a space. Never happened with this mayor, you can contact directly to his team. We have his team, Commissioner Quigman, he can correct that right sir? He will make sure, please stand up. He will make sure if the mayor invites you, nobody can deny. You will go see the mayor, nobody can make a phone call on the side because he's a people's man, he stand with the people and we appreciate that. I want to acknowledge Mr. Latif from the Pakistani Customs Office, thank you sir. Our proud sponsor for today, Divya Mustafa, thank you sir. And I'm not calling for me defenders, always with the mayor and the community, thank you sir. Thank you, sir. And Ms. Machine, Jazza Restrom, always here for the community. Thank you. Before wasting any more time, the floor is yours. Please go to your questions. Captain Etsham Khan, please.
I'm not a white person. I'm from the school in Queens and I want to thank you very much for giving us Eid. It wasn't the day, but you gave us the Friday. Thank you so much. My first question to you is, Muharram will be starting on the 27th of this month. And we have a big parking problem in our mosque in Alcoi. So I would like to ask you if you can help us with the parking in Jamaica Hospital. You know, there's a public, I think it's a public hospital and there's a lot of parking.
All right, the question is one or three precinct? Is that the one or, what precinct is that? One or seven? Let's first let's see the, anything, let's coordinate to, if we need to close down the street for the park in the street in front of the, it's in front of the mosque?
Yes, on the side street.
So whatever we need to do to get you to park it, we're going to do. So we need to go there and do an analysis. What time is the program?
It's starting on the 27th and it goes on to 54th Sunday.
So it's a pleasure to have you here in the Pakistani community. So basically, my question is that most of the high schools or middle schools in Brooklyn or all over New York does not give us halal food for lunch. So it doesn't make a possibility for you to get halal food so we could eat the halal food and the meat over there.
I know we have, two things, two things come up. One, we have made halal food available in schools. Do you need, can you talk to me about that, how much? And second, the most important thing that we're looking at is that just as we acknowledge other food from other communities, you should be able to have your own system of halal food. You should be able to make sure certified and not just someone just putting a sticker on it saying it's halal food. There are real procedures in place to, when you're dealing with other of, 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 of communities and certifying their food, we need to do that safely for halal food as well. But I'm talking about, talking about that.
There is an office of food and nutrition services that can verify that we can have halal food for you. I want, I have a colleague sitting near a very aisle who will get your information, give you answers. And we promise we will follow up with you and we will make sure.
I would like to say a great word for Rohil. He's done a great job and he's bringing, of course, you.
Being here, this is a great deal. Thank you very much Rohil for you, great services for the community. And my relation with the Pakistani television, I believe all AM news, I am Asit Jamal. And my question is for safety and community relations. So as a safety remains a top concern across New York City, how is your office working with Pakistani American leaders to build a stronger police community trust while addressing the, the rising issue of hate crimes or bias incidents?
And so, we have witnessed an increase in hate crime in the Muslim community and the Jewish community. And I think it's a slight tick in the LGBTQ plus community. So we're seeing an increase in hate crime. And that's why we are not allowing just a downplaying of hate crime. If it's a hate crime, we're going to investigate it. We're not going to try to fudge the numbers. We're going to say, let's investigate it and it is what it is. Second, it is imperative that all of our prosecutor's office, I believe, should have a no plea bargain for hate crime. You commit a hate crime, we're not going to drop it down to a harassment and let people get away with it. We should have a no plea bargain for hate crime. And I see everybody's voice to do that. But when it comes down to public safety, there was a great brother that was in this community saying, he wanted to do a Muslim security patrol. And I was bar president at the time. He got a lot of pushback for it. Some of the older members here will remember when he tried to do it. And we helped him, did the vehicles, helped him get the support that he needed to make sure we have a Muslim patrol. One way to keep the city safe is to make sure that put in place a security like other communities, the Assellers, Sharm Society, all of these communities, the men have stepped up and said, we want to protect our community in collaboration with the police department. We have a great police department, community affairs, but there's nothing stopping for that extra layer. You know your community, you know how to police your community. And to be honest, men should not want the police in their communities only. They should take the role of protecting the children and families of the community. And that is one way to make sure we keep our city safe. So I want to encourage you to create a real security patrol. I will bring in security patrol, volunteer security patrols from other communities to sit down and assist you in the process. But there's no reason we don't have a Pakistani security patrol, a Muslim security patrol. There's no reason it doesn't exist. No one is going to be more invested in protecting the children and families of their community than the people that live in that community.
My question, I served the country. I am almost retired or close to retirement because I passed my NYPD test back in 2003. But then I went to the military and served with them for about four years and became a language instructor with them and all that. And my son now is fulfilling my dream. I serve the country and he is serving the city. What my question is very simple and straightforward. What will your administration do for the South Asian community and their leadership roles in the city agencies or city jobs such as NYPD, FDNY, DOE, or any other of those agencies or MTA for that matter? What are your plans for that for the South Asian community and the leadership roles?
One, two, okay, great. First of all, you know, I think there's nothing more significant than to see your son, you know, becoming a member of the law enforcement community. I think it's important. And in city government, we had the, we had the ballot. I'm sorry, Commissioner Molina, how many jobs you have opened?
Nineteen thousand.
We have nineteen thousand jobs open. In the city, nineteen thousand jobs. This is such an opportunity, such an opportunity in every area you can think about. If, if you want to get the services that you deserve and you really, you're fighting for, because the power of a community is the ability to get the resources out of agencies. So let's do what you did, encourage your son to go into law enforcement. We need and continue to need more Muslim officers, more Pakistani officers. I think your numbers are up to what, 700 now?
Seven seventy-five.
Seven seventy-five, that's a long way from where I was. But instead of seven seventy-five, we have thirty-five thousand officers. Why can't we turn that into seven thousand? Good job, twenty years of retirement. So encourage to go into Department of Corrections. Encourage to go into Department of Sanitation. Encourage to be school safety officers. Then encourage to take the exams so that we can do discretionary hires. But also, when you look at my administration, we had the first East Indian Deputy Mayor, first Dominican Deputy Mayor, first Filipino Deputy Mayor, first Trinidadian Deputy Mayor. The first career to be in charge of small business services. You know, so breaking down barriers is what I do. And the city government should reflect the people, but we need them to get in. We should not have nineteen thousand jobs that are available. So have a hiring hall and invite the community leaders and, and community residents to the hiring hall. We'll bring out all the agencies. And all you have to do is bring the young people and those who want to change jobs. These are good jobs, city service jobs, and we should encourage people to get in. That's how we make sure they move up through the ranks by being in the department. You know, I'm sitting next to a inspector who came in and continued to excel. And I'm pretty sure he's going to be moving even further before I get the heck out of here, you know?
And you respected, we face a parking problem everywhere. And because a lot of people have own house and they cover the illegal parking. And we have every day a lot of problems. So that, maybe building departments have the problem that they're not telling them to be that is not your legally parking. So they're not going to be fined and they're not talking about this issue because this is a big problem for everywhere. In Queens, the police everywhere. Because who have the homeowner, they try to make captain more than one parking, two parking, which is illegal.
Go to the precinct council leader and share it with the precinct commander and the community affairs officer, because no one should be parking illegally. But you know, we need to be clear. I don't know any communities that's no deal with parking issues. There's a lot of cars and everyone is trying to find a space. And there's not a law that prevent a homeowner to say he only can have one car or one parking spot. It's first come, first served when it comes down to parking in the city of New York.
He wants to thank the mayor for getting his son the line of duty that he deserved. He's the father of the B F Y S and he, and he appreciates it. He also wants to thank Detective Rohil Khalid for standing with him throughout the whole process. And he did not ask Rohil Khalid for doing any of those things. He stood by himself with the father of the B F Y S to get him justice that he deserved. So he wants to know after the passing of his son, his son also had few kids. One of the kids was eight years old. He woke up on Father's Day and he wanted to give flowers to his father. And he was asking his mother, since I have no father, who do I present the flowers to? So his mother asked him to give flowers to grandfather and also the younger kids. He wants to know what is the procedure in haste to prevent from future police officers' sons or kids to miss their fathers in the line of duty?
Listen, our hearts goes, I think our hearts go out to you. You are not alone, you have an entire family. That's one thing about law enforcement. Law enforcement continues to stand with families. And we are going to make sure those children never again had to ask that question. We will be there, this, this organization and group. They came to me, they shared with me what happened to your son. And I promised him that day we would give him the line of duty designation that he deserved so his family would not have to go without. There was an attempt not to give him that line of duty, which is so important for the family to be able to provide for themselves. But we cannot pay you enough for the sacrifice your family made with your son dying in the line of duty, no matter what you did. And by apprehending the person responsible, ensuring that he was held accountable for it, is our way of saying how much your son meant to us and how much your family means to us at the same time. We're so sorry. And tomorrow, if you give me your number, I'm going to call his children and tell them that they will always be children to me in my heart all the time.
He sees his son in every police officer's uniform. And he appreciates everything he does. He wants to thank everyone that is here.
How are you? Thank you very much. And first of all, grateful to you to have you in a downtown meeting atmosphere and listening to us, to our concern. Then I would like to appreciate and thank you, Rohil, Paul and young officers to ensure a day and night trying to keep our community safe and trying to bring community close to you. Today, sir, I have a concern. And I would like to, regarding political adjacencies in a line of duty. We are seeing our officers, Pakistani officers, they are working hard. But we are not seeing as much as their ability, appearance, I think, if I can say.
First, we always have to pre-sell the person to. But the mere fact that you have, get that brother in the back, his hands up. The mere fact that you are raising the concern of seeing officers from the community move up through the ranks, that warm my heart. Because years ago, you would not have seen the comfortability of community leaders stating that, listen, we want to see our officers move up through the ranks. And it is, it has been part of my mission of making sure that we continue to diversify the hierarchy of the police department. You have the first chief in the intelligence division in the police department of Muslim descent Pakistani. Never was thought of before, never. You're seeing more and more commanding officers to run precincts. You're seeing more and more go into precinct societies. And we're going to continue to push the envelope to do more, over and over again. That's our goal and it's not enough. I'm the first to tell you it's not enough. I fought for years in the police department with one of the blacks in law enforcement care and the chair of grand council of guardians. I fought for diversity throughout my entire career. And I'm going to continue to do that as the mayor of the city of New York. And we want to continue to prove the numbers.
With the numbers in Brooklyn's under the mayor's leadership, one thing is diversity is the most important thing for the mayor. Asit Aswan, the commissioner of oath, Sarah Said, these are people in the administration, key positions. But also, we have, never have executives in NYPD. We've seen commanding officers in Transit District 30 in Brooklyn South, the CO the 62, the CO the 72, the XO the 6A. The diversity, this year we're looking just in Brooklyn South. Eight-one CO, Inspector Delrana, in Tom Division, all these people. It's only under the leadership of this mayor, we have seen the diversity and these such.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Amad Afidi. I am a president of Harvard Society of America. No question left. My colleague already asked that, but I have little complaints. As you remember, Mr. Mayor, two thousand twenty-one, we had invited you to our culture show in which every year takes place in the end of November and you were chief guest with us. At that time, you were president of Borough of Brooklyn and we really appreciate your services to the community you delivered so far. But I have one complaint tonight. In twenty twenty-three, as a president of Harvard Society of America, we had sent one invitation to you to invite you to our culture event that every year we celebrate. But I did not get any response from your office, which is, I don't know what you said, but this is my complaint tonight to you. And at the same time, I would really offer my gratitude from my organization to all members of Pauls, to Rohel, to Hattisham, to all Khalid and all this, I don't remember all the names. Hushal Fadak, that whatever job you're doing to the community, we really appreciate you and keep up the good job, good work. Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. Tonight, there are eight events are missing. And when I see them on the street, they're gonna say, Eric, I sent you the invite and you didn't make it. And when I tell them I'm at the Pakistani Town Hall, they're gonna still call me names. One mayor, you know, eight point five million people in this city. And you know what? I can't get everywhere. I went to the baseball game with my son yesterday and he says, Dad, I'm surprised that you were able to take out these two hours to sit next to me. I would love to make every event in this city, every night. There are thirty, forty events taking place. I'm normally in and out, I'll spend fifteen minutes and I'm off to the next one. And I don't know if you realize it or not, but if you take a peek at your clock, you'll realize I have not been here only fifteen minutes. I've been hanging out with you for a little while. So it gets there next year, brother. Next year, when you reelect me, I'll be at that dinner. We're gonna do too far and I gotta bounce, okay?
My name is Mayor Adams.
Yes, sir.
My name is Khalif Avis. You actually served with my grandfather. He was a fire marshal when you were in the NYPD. And I also want to give you a personal thank you because you stopped by my cousin's funeral and you spoke the family that passed at the fire in Brownsville in this fashion. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Rockaway Islamic Center.
So a lot says that we are a nation, we are built from nations and tribes that I'm a believer in. I'm a black Muslim, but I'm here speaking on behalf of the South Asian. So I have a two-part question for you. The first one is how will your administration support the inclusion of South Asian? How?
Muslim.
So the first, the first question is how will your administration support the inclusion of South Asian history and its contributions in the NYC public school curriculum? That's one. We met with a lot of young men. It's a multicultural neighborhood. And a lot of our brothers, they know about our black history, but they don't know about the only history of the school history. That's the first part. The South Asian history and their contributions to NYC. So that's the first part. Keep the mic up. And then the second part is the Rockaway Islamic Center, we are a growing neighborhood, multicultural, multi-diverse neighborhood with blacks, Dali's, Indonesians, Africans. And unfortunately, we're facing a lot of red tape when it comes to expanding our mass yet merely from minor permits, whether it be raising the mass yet or things of that nature. So we're hoping that we can get through to you in regards to expanding that so that we can further bridge out to the black community in our neighborhood, which is what my goal is.
One, two, one, two. We put in place, we put in place, to talk about the South Asians, we put in place something called Hidden Voices and that's focused on the South Asian, the AAPI community on how we be inclusive in our education, you know, and so that's imperative to do. We're gonna do what we have to do within the DOE, but I also want to encourage you that nothing stops us from doing it outside the DOE.
Of course.
Utilizing our school builders to hold conversations inside our auditoriums, our classrooms, you know. So when we see the absence of something, it's imperative for us to fill that void. So I want to encourage you to also utilize the school builders, do that training, do that education as well.
And how will we go about giving access to those buildings?
We have, we have, the DOE, let's talk about how we open up our school buildings to give you that access. Can we hear the mic?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
DOE is a classroom voice. So just to echo what the mayor said, Hidden Voices of curriculum that incorporates AAPI. We also have what we call BTEACH and also is overflowing with Asian American history. But in terms of having our schools open, the mayor has said make sure that our school buildings are community buildings. We can even work with you in certain instances to make sure whatever permits are needed because we have to make sure the staff, with custodial staff, with safety agents, we can work with you. Again, my colleague Serge, he's in the back now. Please connect with this young man to make sure he has all the information so if he needs to put in a permit to have access to schools on an extended use basis, we can make it happen.
You have a master that you're trying to expand. You have an existing building?
Yes, we have an existing building. We've been there since I was a kid.
Okay, okay. And you're trying to build on top of it? What are you trying to do?
We're trying to expand it further into the yard. So we already have the property within itself. However, we're facing red tape in terms of just getting the ability to expand.
Let's try to clear that up, let's try to clear it up, all right? Commissioner Price, Price is over here. He's gonna find out exactly with the footprint, how much you can build and try to get rid of the red tape. Now, I'm noticing that you are getting a line back there. As long as I'm not gonna exist, because I gotta bounce.
It's not my fault.
Let me take one more question.
Thank you.
And then I gotta get to another event so no one will stand up and say, we sent you an invitation, Eric, and you didn't show up. So y'all focus among each other to see who's gonna present the question.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, how are you?
See you again. How are you?
Thank you.
So we have a two-part question.
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank you for everything that you've done for my community or our community. So round of applause for Mr. Mayor once again.
Mike, Mike.
Mayor, I have a question about the NYPD exam.
Yes.
You know that the current cutoff age is thirty-four. So we're wondering, candidates have the ability to be appointed until age thirty-eight? Is it possible to ask DICAS to increase the exam eligibility of age thirty-eight? So that way individuals between thirty-four and thirty-eight don't miss the opportunity to take the exam?
You know, we had that, we had that question earlier today and I agree, I think we should increase it. I'm sixty-five, I still look good as hell. So talk to me, Commissioner Molina, he has the power. Is that doable?
Yeah, so I have to follow up with you on that. The age restriction, I know it's in connection with the mandatory retirement age in the NYPD. It might be something we have to have to go to the state civil service commission on. But I want to highlight that we've done a number of things, not only in the NYPD, but of course a number of agencies, but looking at minimum qualification requirements to make sure that when we're asking someone's ability aligned with the actual job we want to do. And under this administration, college credits, the entry levels to the police department have been our twenty-four credits now because you get the additional credits you need for the minimum requirements through the academy training. That opens up the door for thousands of applicants to join the NYPD. But I'll follow up with you about the age question.
On the left, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Rohel?
I want some people silent.
She has a question.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Zenzim and I'm from Pasuk, California. So first of all, I'd like to say thanks for all of your services who have come so far. So I don't have any question. I just want to bring your attention for, to be concerned, not with my concern, the concern of the people. First of all, the people who don't know how to speak English and they have a problem like forgetting the driving license. So there should be taken some steps like if you get the driving license in jail, then especially in Florida. And the second thing is that there was a donation box in our community before COVID where we can put the condition clothes and shoes, but because of COVID, they don't move. So I just want to request please replace them back. And the third thing is that the people who have pets, they left their base in the street. So please take some, you know, strict steps for them so they cannot leave the street.
Who does DSNY? Who does that? Please, who does DSNY? The pooper scooper. So if you're finding that there is a corridor where this is a repeated problem, let DSNY know and they will come out there and do enforcement because people should pick up after their pets. I didn't understand the license form. You should have the license in the.
Yeah, the driving license, they sent, they sent, they sent, like they, their own, like, whatever.
Okay, that's a, that's a state issue, you know, that's something to the senator or the person. State handles that, cities, we don't handle the license.
Some people just said they have green cards because of English and they have bags that's in the chest. So they have to take the steps for them.
Yeah, that's, again, yeah, that's the three levels of government. If it's a city issue, the mayor handles. If it's a state issue, the state handles. And if it's an immigration issue, the federal government. So your congressperson here, I think your congressperson here is Congresswoman Klaa, but she don't have to handle that situation, okay? All right, guys, I gotta, I gotta bounce.
Guys, before we end, I want to acknowledge all the Pakistanis here. They always do the coverage for NYPD, for the media. We very appreciate it. Quickly, they got only two minutes, so I would like to call the ARI CEO, Asif Jamal. Mohamad Darim, come on to news. Isaiah Fawn. Isaiah Fawn. Someone use. I'm like to, Vias Khan, her husband. Vias Ma, no, Vias Ma. Wait the whites, wait the whites.
So good, so good, so good.
Mohammed Farah. Mavish Saliki. Mavish Saliki. Arshad Awan. Mazur Hussain, Dunia News.
Is this yours?
No.
Sorry, thank you so much. Yeah, that's mine. Yeah, could you move it?
The last, last award is for the New York City Mayor.